Good evening, everyone. I call the West Melbourne City Council meeting to order. It's June 6, 2023. If you'd stand for the pledge and a moment of silent meditation, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. We have roll call, City Council, please.
Mayor Rose.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Frampton.
Here.
Councilmember Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Councilmember Dittmore.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
It's great to have everyone here. We had just finished the budget workshop, so we're kind of continuing this meeting. Our first item up tonight is we have a new employee and city manager. We introduce him to us.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. It is my great pleasure to introduce Mark Petroni, our new projects, Capital Projects Coordinator. Mark comes to us with a little bit different background. He's got his experience on the other side of the fence. He's worked on the development side and worked with municipalities on municipal projects, and so was a great fit for what we're looking for with our water sewer projects, our RFPs, our grants, all those items. And without further ado, I introduce our new Capital Projects, Mark Petroni.
Thank you, everybody. A pleasure to be here. Been around Bivard County since I was three months old. I get reminded every once in a while that Petroni doesn't sound too local, but I consider myself as close as a Bivard resident as you can. Still live here, family's here. Both my sons actually attend at West Melbourne School for Science. Both graduated Mel High, one just recently, and I look forward. I appreciate everything. The staff, everybody's been great, just learning the ropes right now, and appreciate Tim giving me this opportunity, and I look forward to see what I can do to hopefully help out the city.
Mark, what's your specialty that you like in Capital Projects?
Just about everything. I've developed about 15 different projects, residential, industrial, but I would probably say the infrastructure taken from the clearing into the shore and improvements road, just taking something from nothing has probably been my specialty for the last probably 15, 20 years.
All right, very good. Welcome aboard.
Any questions?
No.
Sure.
All right.
Welcome. Thank you, Mark. While they're finishing up there, again, I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting tonight, and if anybody cares to speak on any topic, whether it's on tonight's agenda or anything else, you need to fill out a speaker card located by the front door there and give it to the city clerk, and she'll give it to me. Each person who wishes to speak should submit that ahead of time, and when recognized to speak, please go up to the mic and give your name and address for the record. Please address all your comments through this chair, and we allocate three minutes on most items. All right. Our first public hearing tonight is the water rate increase via the city of West Melbourne and Melbourne, passing on that on.
Excuse me, mayor's member of the, members of the council. This evening, we are having our second go around with this item and having our public hearing regarding the rate increase to the waters. Again, passing the increase that our current water provider, the city of Melbourne, increased 14%, and we are passing that through into our billing system. And so put notices out in all three billing cycles, and it's been on the website, and as active as we can to have promoted that information. And so this evening is the public hearing to take that necessary action.
All right. So this is a public hearing on the water rate increase. Does anybody from the public wish to address city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What to which is the council?
We need to have the ordinance read aloud.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number 2023-10, an ordinance of the city of West Melbourne, Bivard County, Florida, amending section 58-98A, monthly potable water rates, providing for severability and interpretation, providing for the repeal of ordinances and resolutions in conflict herewith, providing for incorporation into the code of ordinances, providing for an effective date.
Very good. All right. Dip, let's see, Mr. Dittmore first.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to confirm with the city manager that this increase that we're having is a direct response to the city of Melbourne, correct, for their increase rate?
Correct. This is a direct pass-through. We are not netting, netting any increase or suffering any financial loss.
Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the second reading ordinance, 2023-10, effective August 1st, increasing the water consumption rate.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Mr. Dittmore?
One of many.
Okay. Then Deputy Mayor Frampton.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rhodey? On 10A-7, you talk about the increases for a three-quarter inch service line and what the effects would be to raise. The consumption rate is the same for all sizes of pipe coming in, right? I mean, it's, you didn't, you didn't show any other.
Yeah, we showed the residential, so each, each meter size has a consumption rate, but we just put in here the residential meter, the three-quarter meter.
To clarify, so each meter size has a different base rate, which is a service fee, so for the residential's at 1575, but the consumption rate per gallon is the same. It just, it just changes based on the tier of usage.
Right. Thank you.
All right. So, Mr. City Manager, the rate increase is the same amount that the city of Melbourne is passing on? Is that correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay. And didn't they say in their report, the reason they're raising it this much is because they're losing a great customer, the city of West Melbourne?
That was mentioned in the report, sir.
They probably didn't use the word "great," but yes. Okay, so we're just passing this on, and when will our water plant be up and running?
1,305 days from now. We will be producing water and pumping it through our utility.
So that's approximately 2026, if I did the math correct?
Four and a half. That's four and a half years, sir.
Okay.
A little bit less.
Okay, excellent. All right. We have a motion and second on the floor. All those in favor, they're going to be saying aye, aye, oppose. Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you. Next up, we have the public forum, where speakers allocated three minutes to speak on any subject that they wish. Okay. Does anybody, I know we have a great-looking group there from the Field of Dreams and other agencies there. Does anybody want
If you'd stand for the pledge and a moment of silent meditation, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. We have roll call, City Council, please.
Mayor Rose.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Frampton.
Here.
Councilmember Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Councilmember Dittmore.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Great to have everyone here. We had just finished the budget workshop, so we're kind of continuing this meeting. Our first item up tonight is we have a new employee and City Manager. We introduce him to us.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. It is my great pleasure to introduce Mark Petroni, our new projects, Capital Projects Coordinator. Mark comes to us with a little bit different background. He's got his experience on the other side of the fence. He's worked on the development side and worked with municipalities on municipal projects. And so was a great fit for what we're looking for with our water sewer projects, our RFPs, our grants, all of those items. And without further ado, I introduce our new Capital Projects, Mark Petroni.
Thank you, everybody. Pleasure to be here. Been around Bovard County since I was three months old. I get reminded every once in a while that Petroni doesn't sound too local, but I consider myself as close as a Bovard resident as you can. Still live here, family's here. Both my sons actually attend at West Melbourne School for Science. Both graduated Mel High, one just recently. And I look forward, I appreciate everything. The staff, everybody's been great, just learning the ropes right now. And appreciate Tim giving me this opportunity, and I look forward to see what I can do to hopefully help out the city.
Mark, what's your specialty that you like in Capital Projects?
Just about everything. I've developed about 15 different projects, residential, industrial. But I would probably say the infrastructure, taking from the clearing into the shore and improvements road, just taking something from nothing has probably been my specialty for the last probably 15, 20 years.
All right. Very good. Welcome aboard.
Any questions?
No.
Sure.
All right. Welcome. While they're finishing up there, again, I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting tonight. And if anybody cares to speak on any topic, whether it's on tonight's agenda or anything else, you need to fill out a speaker card located by the front door there and give it to the City Clerk, and she'll give it to me. Each person who wishes to speak should submit that ahead of time. And when recognized to speak, please go up to the mic and give your name and address for the record. Please address all your comments through this chair, and we allocate three minutes on most items. All right. Our first public hearing tonight is the water rate increase via the City of West Melbourne and Melbourne, passing on that on.
Excuse me. Mayor's member of the, members of the council, this evening we are having our second go around with this item and having our public hearing regarding the rate increase to the waters. Again, passing the increase that our current water provider, the City of Melbourne, increased 14%, and we are passing that through into our billing system. And so put notices out in all three billing cycles, and it's been on the website, and as active as we can to have promoted that information. And so this evening is the public hearing to take that necessary action.
All right. So this is a public hearing on the water rate increase. Does anybody from the public wish to address City Council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What's the wish of the council?
We need to have the ordinance read aloud?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number 2023-10, an ordinance of the City of West Melbourne, Bovard County, Florida, amending section 58-98A, monthly potable water rates, providing for severability and interpretation, providing for the repeal of ordinances and resolutions in conflict herewith, providing for incorporation into the code of ordinances, providing for an effective date.
Very good. All right. Dip, let's see, Mr. Dittmore first.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to confirm with the City Manager that this increase that we're having is a direct response to the City of Melbourne, correct, for their increase rate?
Correct. This is a direct pass-through. We are not netting, netting any increase or suffering any financial loss.
Okay. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the second reading ordinance, 2023-10, effective August 1st, increasing the water consumption rate.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Mr. Dittmore?
One of many.
Okay. Then Deputy Mayor Frampton.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rhodey, on 10A-7, you talk about the increases for a three-quarter inch service line and what the effects would be to raise. The consumption rate is the same for all sizes of pipe coming in, right? I mean, it's, you didn't, you didn't show any other?
Yeah, we showed the residential, so each, each meter size has a consumption rate. But we just put in here the residential meter, the three-quarter meter.
To clarify, so each meter size has a different base rate, which is a service fee. So for the residential's at 1575, but the consumption rate per gallon is the same. It just, it just changes based on the tier of usage.
Right. Thank you.
All right. So, Mr. City Manager, the rate increase is the same amount that the City of Melbourne is passing on, is that correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay. And didn't they say in their report, the reason they're raising it this much is because they're losing a great customer of the City of West Melbourne?
That was mentioned in the report, sir.
They probably didn't use the word "great," but yes. Okay. So we're just passing this on, and when will our water plant be up and running?
1,305 days from now. We will be producing water and pumping it through our utility.
So that's approximately 2026, if I did the math correct?
Four and a half. That's four and a half years.
Okay.
A little bit less.
Okay. Excellent. All right. We have a motion and second on the floor. All those in favor, so you can go ahead and say aye, aye, opposed. Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you. Next up, we have the public forum, where speakers are allocated three minutes to speak on any subject that they wish. Does anybody, I know we have a great-looking group there from the Field of Dreams and other agencies there. Does anybody want to speak on public forum? But we also have speakers when we actually talk about the Field of Dreams. I'm sorry?
13B.
13B, if you can fill out a card and, okay. You did? Okay. Yeah, we'll call you up then. Thank you. All right. Seeing nothing, no speakers for the consent for the public forum. We'll go on to the consent agenda. We're, we have one item, the minutes from our last meeting, May 16th, 2023. Ms. Young?
Motion to approve the minutes is written. Thank you.
Ms. Adams?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, so you can go ahead and say aye, aye, opposed. Motion carries, 7-0. Brings us to the action agenda. Our first item out of three is group insurance plan for the upcoming fiscal year 2324.
Thank you, Mayor. Member of, members of the council, while our amazing HR Director takes the stand with Ms. Morgan, our consultant, just want to remind everyone that we're coming into renewal and open season. And so went to the marketplace, and I will turn it over to our HR Director, Ms. Curran, to present this information this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Our city's insurance broker, Highland, has negotiated rates from all of our current providers for the city's employee benefits for the 2023 and 2024 year. We have representatives from Highland here tonight, Sherry Morgan and Jennifer West, who are going to provide information and answer any of the questions that you may have. Following the presentation, we recommend that council adopts resolution number 2023-08, approving the city's group insurance plans for the 2023 and 2024 plan year. I'll turn it over to Sherry Morgan.
Thank you, Jennifer. Greetings, everyone. Health insurance often isn't a favorable subject. However, last year, after being with Health First health plans for many years, the city did have a very seamless transition to Cigna. Unfortunately, there were some very large claims, and Cigna did come in initially with a 25% increase. We were able to negotiate that down to 12% with similar benefits. By tweaking the benefits a little bit, we were able to get that down to 8%. We did look at the market to see what we could find, and we did get quotes from United Healthcare, as well as Florida Blue. United was really not competitive. Florida Blue was compelling, but not for significant savings beyond what we were able to negotiate with Cigna. So we are recommending that you stay with Cigna for an 8% increase with a tweak of the benefits. The detailed benefits are in attachment A that was provided. Any questions on the medical?
I think just to clarify, the, the significant difference in the proposed plan with Cigna versus what we currently have is, is going from a single member 250 deductible to 500 and going from a family 500 to 1,000 is probably the significant. There's some copay differences of $20 up to $30 is probably the normal one. And then, you know, emergency room is up a little bit, those kinds of minor adjustments. But we did, Highland was able to do 100% plan as opposed to 80% plan, so I don't know if you want to touch on that at all?
Yeah, it is 100% insurance, so you have the deductible, and then you'd be meeting the max out-of-pocket through copays, basically. One of the things that was very important, that we kept the prescription plan the same. One of the things we saw with Health First is that people were choosing their medical plan based on the prescription benefit. So we know that that benefit is extremely important to the employees, and that's why the benefit is the same as it was last year, and it's on the same on both plans, the base plan as well as the value plan.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at the way that it's currently structured in your proposal, going from that 250 for an individual to 500, we have just completed that comp and class study that was telling us, from my understanding, that as a city, we did quite well in terms of the compensation and the benefits that we offer. I want to say we were at the top end of that tier. With this change, if we go from basically doubling the individual and the family costs, that would bring us closer to where that average is. Where would that place us? I mean, would we be just about the same as our peers? Because part of our competitiveness is being above in what we offer.
We offer a very rich plan, so...
Can you use the mic, though?
We offer a very rich plan, so we're still continuing to offer a very rich plan. It's just in this situation, it's going to cost a little bit more. So I would say we're either average or still above.
Okay. That, I was just looking to see where we might fall with that. That's all my questions for now.
Mr. McDowell?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is about the 8%. So is that 8% to the employee and 8% to the city? Or is that a 6-2? How is that 8%? What does that mean?
Oh, it's just a flat, it's an 8% increase to the city. The, the impact to employees is going to vary per pay period, anywhere from $3 to $10, $8 per pay period. So the city would be absorbing, absorbing the majority of the increase.
Okay. That's very important to understand that. Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Frampton?
So it seems like you said there was a 12% increase, and then with the tweaks, it went down to 8. So when you say tweaks, that's kind of the cost that we pushed on to the staff, is that correct?
Actually, those tweaks, to be specific, are the changes Mr. Rhodey was speaking about, where the deductible went from 250 to 500 on the base plan, and from 1,000 to 2,000 on the value plan.
Are the costs that we applied to the employees? So, so they're kind of contributing 4% to the increase, and we're kind of contributing 8% to the increase? Is that, is that fair?
No, I would say the city is contributing a much larger increase. There will be a little bit larger costs.
But you said it was 12% until we added in the extra deductibles, so dropped it 4%, which adding in the extra deductibles costs the staff more. So basically, that 4% was on the staff's shoulders and not ours, correct?
Well, part of that is also Cigna making a concession. The loss ratio on the medical plans is around 120%. That means for every dollar the city pays in premium, Cigna's paying out $1.20. When Cigna came in initially last year, it was with the interest of being a partner with the city and not just coming in for a one-year solution. So Cigna is in it for the long haul, wanting to partner with the city and help get through this tough time. So a portion of that going from 12% to 8% was adjusting the benefits, but it was also Cigna making additional concessions on behalf of the city.
And we don't know the difference, right? Off the top of your head?
No.
What the concessions were as opposed to what their good faith was?
No, it just, it took a lot of negotiation, and we were thrilled to get them to the 8% with the benefit changes. I mean, keep in mind, we started at 25, and we got down to 12, and then it was through minor changes that we were able to get to 8. The other thing to keep in mind is the deductible is only going to apply for a small variety of services. Employees can still go in and have outpatient surgery or inpatient, be admitted to the hospital for a copay. So there are not many things that are subject to the deductible. So although it doubled on both plans, there's not many services that are subject to the deductible. The vast majority of the services are copay-based.
So Cigna's increase, was that because of claims that we made here in the city? Or was that because of national claims that on the whole, company as a whole?
When you look at healthcare costs, there are underlying inflation for healthcare, just what they call trend. But there certainly were large claims by city employees and their loved ones, their dependents. So it's a portion of both. But like I said, it was 120% loss ratio when they first looked at the renewal. And then when we looked at it again, because sometimes when we get a second look, we may see a positive trend. Unfortunately, in this case, the loss ratio actually got worse. So that's why it was definitely a concession on behalf of Cigna to come in and lower the increase even more than they initially did.
So is there an outlook for next year as well? I mean, is it, are they going to try to make up the difference next year?
We typically don't see Cigna do that. They are a good carrier partner. I don't have a crystal ball to say what's going to happen next year. I do remember, though, in many years with Health First, we would see flat increases, sometimes even decreases, and we'd have to say, remember this because it's not going to happen forever. People are getting older, they are having more health issues. You see all the advertisements on TV in the evening for very expensive drugs. Fortunately for many people, there's a lot of innovation, and there are solutions and cures that are available, but it comes at a cost. So it's impossible to say what will happen next year, but there's a lot of things that go into consideration when looking at options. You know, there was a big concern in moving from Health First to Cigna because of impact to members. You know, their doctors, their specialists, where they go for their labs, where they get their prescriptions filled, those kinds of things. So we want to really minimize impacts to members and hope that next year will be a better year and the claims will not be as high as that they've run in the past.
Thank you.
Ms. Young, you are next.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you very much for your negotiation and all the work that you've done to get these numbers down. However, we just did the wage and benefits, as Diana Adams referred to. And so we thought we were doing something that was really helpful to our employees, that many of them received raises, and we wanted them to be really glad that they work here. And now that we're negotiating with our police department, we want to attract and we want to keep good officers and people that want to work here and have families to support. And it seems like we gave them a raise, and now we're increasing their deductibles. And as you said, there's been some large, large claims. So obviously, our families need this insurance. And although it may not be all of the things, I know that when I go, it seems like when I go to the doctor, everything I'm going is something special, and there's an extra deductible on top of it, and I'm sure that I'm not alone in that. Is there any way we can get these numbers more than one year, like we do when we have a contract, where we can hold the numbers for more than one year? Or is this the absolute best that they can do? Does Cigna want to keep us as a, as a customer?
Cigna definitely wants to keep you as a client, despite the fact that they're losing money. Cigna does not look at the solution as a one-year solution. They look at it from a long haul. You were with Health First for how many years, Jennifer?
Over 10.
Over 10 years. And so Cigna's looking for the same thing. They're, they're looking for a long-term partnership.
And we are too, with our employees, so...
Well, and so let me go ahead, if it's okay, address the second part of your question. So yes, the deductible did double on both plans. However, there are many, many services that are not subject to the deductible. They're copay-based, and so it's very helpful for employees to know ahead of time how much it's going to cost when to go to the doctor, go to get a prescription filled, or even go into the hospital. So that, the other thing is, there was very careful consideration last year in looking at the plan designs, having a very rich base plan with a low deductible, the 250 changing to 500, but then adding the value plan, which is really geared to those employees that have families, that find it difficult to pay those payroll deductions to have dependent coverage. By having the value plan with a little bit higher deductible, but still a very rich benefit, comparatively speaking, in the central Florida market, to make those payroll deductions affordable for people that have families. Still very attractive benefits, copay-based, and again, there are not many services that are subject to the deductible, so people can have the comfort of knowing it's a copay to go to the doctor, infer ambulatory surgery, hospital admission, prescriptions, MRIs, emergency room, et cetera.
All right. Thank you. And I will make the motion, then, since this is going around, you make the motion, please, to adopt resolution number 2023-8, approving the city's group insurance plan for the 2023-2024 plan year provided by the vendors.
Thank you. Second, Rose. I'll make a couple of comments. Nobody liked to see an increase in, in costs. I mean, you just heard that water rates are going up 14%. Our, our trash hauler is talking about 40%. That's coming up soon. Everything is more expensive. We know that. Just life on this earth gets more expensive all the time. And 8%, while we don't like it, it's the reality. And some of it, just an internal problem. We had a bad year with, like you said, employee, a lot of spouses or family sicknesses, so that raised the cost up. In the past, we've been pretty fortunate to have a lower than the companies expect in payments. This year, it was not. Unfortunately, it was not. Hopefully, that everybody stays healthy and those costs go down, and that will be reflected in next year's, whatever performance that you all give us. It's, we have a relatively young workforce here, so we're getting older every day, speaking for myself, that, you know, it's, it gets more costly. So the only thing I can say, join the Mayor's Fitness Challenge and stay healthy. It's okay. All right. Mr. McDowell?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick follow-up on process. Since we're talking about insurance, and it's based on pool of risk, correct? So it's based on how many people are in the plan? And my question is, is, are we part of a consortium? Have we looked at that as part of our strategic thinking to help reduce the cost through pool of risk?
We have not recently looked at solutions based on the history with Health First and the fact that there were very minimal increases as well as decreases. That was not something that was considered. It's something that could be looked at in the future, although the other municipal clients that we have are not participating in those types of programs. They enjoy the flexibility of being able to carve out programs specifically to meet the needs of their employees.
But it's something we could consider down the road to help offset and lower our costs through pool of risk. Thank you.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Something that I just wanted to share prior to us voting is something to keep in mind. If this is our best option in terms of payment for employees and for the city, if we, we don't support this moving forward, and we look at the potential of going to another vendor, I'm worried about the families that are currently using Cigna with the claims that we've had. It can be very difficult to move from one vendor to another vendor with the current treatments you're receiving and everything else. So I think that's going to be just our, our most responsible option, knowing that the deductible is more is unfortunate. But I think also switching right now, when, when healthcare can be hard to find, finding the right vendor who supplies what can be a challenge for families, and I don't want to do that to our employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I think this is a pretty benefit-rich program, so thank you for your effort on that. I would also just mention that I think the city needs to do a better job of, I don't know if better was the right word there, but, but to do a good job in pointing out to the employees the difference, how much the city's picking up here, because it's my understanding, the city's paying the major part of the increase and not passing it on to the employees. But I don't know if we get it from just reading this. So I think that we need to do a good job of putting out to employees that, hey, look, your premium went up some, but the city ate most of the cost for you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on that. I would like to see each employee get a spreadsheet on what, what it costs to employ them. If their salary is $50,000, maybe it's costing the city $85,000 in real money to have that employee. So, all right, we have a motion and second on the floor. All those in favor, so you can go ahead and say aye, aye, opposed. Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you. Thanks for the hard work. Our next action item is maintenance of the Space Coast Field of Dreams pour-in-place surface repair and/or replacement.
Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council, presenting an item this evening regarding the repairs for the pour-in-place surfaces at the Space Coast Field of Dreams. the repairs for the pour-in-place surfaces at the Space Coast Field of Dreams. This fiscal year, the city increased the maintenance and repair budget from $31,000 to $60,000, an increase over last year. We have worked with several vendors to pull together a number of options for repair, replacement of those surfaces. So we've visited the site, walked the site with the, the vendors. They've provided some proposals for us. What staff is recommending this evening is repair to all of the, all four of the pour-in-place surfaces, the baseball field, the basketball practice area, the playground, and the soccer field. There's an exhibit in the staff report that shows the areas that are identified for repairs. The Public Works Department has made some immediate repairs to the fields. Today, they were out there patching so that the fields can be used. They had ran out of materials, so we'd ordered some additional material to finish that so that the fields can be used while we await, you know, more substantial repairs by a contractor that you all may select this evening. What we would then do for an ongoing basis is add to the capital improvement project, the five-year CIP, an ongoing maintenance item that would address this, review it and address it down the road as needed, and to do a full replacement of those fields. So in the staff report, you can see the options for the full replacement, the top coat resurface, which is another half an inch of material that goes on top of the existing surfaces. They'd feather it out at the edges so that you don't have any trip hazards. So that was the, the sort of medium option as opposed to a full replacement or the repairs. Based on the proposals that have been submitted, staff is recommending a budget amendment to increase the budget, the maintenance repair at the Field of Dreams to accommodate the $73,117.06 to do repairs to all four of those surfaces as identified in the staff report. So what we would request is authorization for the city manager to execute an agreement with Rep Services and the amount of $73,117.06 for repairs to the pour-in-place surfaces, for baseball field, basketball practice area, soccer field, and playground, and adopt what I failed to include in that recommendation is the budget amendment resolution, which is to adopt Resolution 2023-09 to allow that to take place.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and call the speakers, and we have some, some people that want to talk. First speaker is Milo Zonka, who's a, one of the early members of the Field of Dreams.
Early member?
Yeah.
Ancient.
Mayor, member of council, Milo Zonka. And just to give a, a short history, I was on the Field of Dreams Board back, not quite at the inception, but came along later and, and really got involved, particularly when the, when the park was being built. I missed a, I missed a board meeting one time, and, and that's the meeting where they appointed me kind of the project manager for the board. So I was out there, you know, three times, four times a week and dealing with the contractors. So I probably know more and have forgotten more than anybody would ever know about all the details of how this park was built. And it was a labor of love. I mean, when they say it took a village, I mean, it, it really did, when you count the 900 volunteers that came out and, you know, built the playground, to the hundreds of people who were working for different contractors to do the build. There's nothing like it. There was nothing like it at the time. There's nothing like it today. I could say that on my birthday, I guess that would have been in 2015, I think it was, there were four different modifications to the pouring of the baseball field concrete in the same day, because the geometry was so hard to get the drainage to work, because, as you all know, West Melbourne doesn't drain. So, you know, that, that was a true challenge. So what you have there is a very unique park, a unique product, and, and it was built, it was built like a brick crap house, to say, for lack of any better words. It was built well, it was built to last, it was built to be generally maintenance-free. The only exception to that are going to be the soft surfaces. I mean, we knew from the beginning, I mean, the vendor was very clear, Rainbow Products was the vendor, that, that you would have to, you would have to replace the surface in a matter of years, whether it was five to seven years, because it's, you know, Florida sun's tough. Every place where we put joints was going to be an opportunity for a split, which is the, what's happened. So I guess I'm here to say, there really shouldn't be any surprises to this, and I, I would, I would encourage you to perhaps reconsider the step you're taking tonight, only because where you're seeing the failures largely is at the seams of the material. And, and maybe it was a, it was a design failure at the time to create all those seams, because, you know, you want, you want green in the field and blue on the sides and red in the back, and all those places were opportunities for a seam to occur, and where those seams happen, that's where a lot of the pulling of parts happen. And they, and they did warn us about that. I mean, there was, that was a known issue, but that was part of the, the failure cycle, if you will, knowing that five to seven years out, you'd have to redo this stuff. I, you know, I can only say that at the time, you know, there was a lot, there was known. How much of that carried forward and how much of that was planned for? I mean, it's unfortunate for the park to be in the condition it is today and to be having this discussion like it is. I would just encourage you to, to, the halfway step is going to create more seams. Just know, as you're making a repair, if you're cutting out a spot, you're putting in a new, you're replacing that spot, that entire thing is a seam, and the seams are the failure points on this material. You might need to, if you need to do the repairs to keep the park safe and to keep it open for the, for the big-picture plan, then just understand, you're, you're probably coming back in next year and really repouring that, that material. I mean, truly, I mean, you're, you're, this is a stop-gap maneuver that's happening tonight. And I, and in that same line, I would strongly encourage you to immediately make the, the steps you need to make to keep the park safe, to keep it open to all the people it was intended to be there for, and you're gonna, it's gonna cost money. And I, I, I'm sorry, I mean, in that, yes, we tried to, to build it in a way that it would last, but knowing that there were certain things that just wouldn't, weren't gonna last your lifetime and mine. And I know that maintenance is tough for governments, you know? I mean, we, we like to build stuff and, and then build new stuff on top of the old stuff, but this is not one of those things. This is a trade, this is a straight maintenance project to, to keep the park safe. So, you know, that's all I can say. It, it, this, this was truly a, a complex monumental effort to get it built, and I know that it continues to be that same challenge, to keep it safe and to keep it going, but it is a necessary expense. And I, regardless of how the relationship is now, I'm not, I'm not on the board, as you all know, I mean, I, I can speak a little bit freely on that. It, it's a board of volunteers. It's always been a board of volunteers. You know, we, we wrote the letters to get, to raise the money. We, you know, we, we did all the hustle to find the contractors. We, I, I never got paid to sit, to sit there on, you know, on a Tuesday afternoon and watch them pour concrete. But all that said, however we got to where we are today, and I know there's some back-and-forth between, you know, did the city get the money? Did the Field of Dreams raise the money? All those things, none of that's going to fix the park. So if you want to spend their time on that, do what you need to do. And we always want to make sure everybody does the right thing, but it doesn't fix the park. So fix the park, worry about the other stuff as well, whatever you need to do, but it, it needs to get done. So thank you. And I, I can answer any questions. I mean, my knowledge is very old, and for what it's worth on the finances, I am the keeper of the QuickBooks file as of, up until the end of like 2017. So you, if, if I'm your treasurer, you know, you know, that's where all the trouble happened. But, but in all seriousness, it really was a volunteer effort for...
I do have, I have a question for you, Milo, here. I guess we're finding out now that the field's supposed to be sealed, that, that rubberized surface is supposed to be sealed on a regular basis, yearly basis, I, I guess I'm being told. Do you know how many times you guys had it sealed before you turned it over?
I would say it, I, I don't think it was sealed at the time it was turned over. We, we entertained multiple vendors at the time, and, and so we heard some say the ceiling had some value to it, and we heard some say that it, it, it probably didn't. I mean, the, the fact is, it's rubber, it's constantly exposed to, to the Florida sun, and there's, you know, I, I think in general, the...
Which is what the ceiling's supposed to help, correct?
Again, I, I heard both sides, and I, I'm not the expert to it, but I did hear two sides to it. But I do know that, like, for example, you know, the playground was expected to be inspected every year, and then, you know, touch-up mistakes, so touch-up, you know, things that happened with wear and tear to get fixed. We, I, as long as I was on the park, it went through at least one of those cycles. So it, it's not that there was any lack of effort to, to keep the park in, in a condition. I think there was some debate over the value of the ceiling.
Thank you.
But Milo, as you remember, when the Space Coast Field of Dreams turned it over to the city, they made us repair everything to get it like new again, and then we gave it to the city.
Yeah, I mean, the park, again, I, I can speak to it being in excellent condition when it was built and for the first couple of years and with those wear and tear items, but it did, it, it did have a set of eyes on it, and it was maintained.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Can you just restate what you said as far as your recommendation, is that we do not approve, this is a stop-gap measure, and we should go for the larger sum of money?
I'm not going to make that recommendation. What I did say, though, was that I, I expect that the investment, if you make it tonight, is not one that's going to last you more than to carry you into a larger expense.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I think the park needs to be safe. You all know what's best for that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Denise, and mother of Brittany, and Jade, of course.
I have Tony, Lindsay, and my daughter Brittany. She's actually the poster child, so she's actually was a child. She was six years old when the Field of Dreams started, so longer than most of you have even been sitting up here, because she's 24 now. But I'm here representing them. The park, she does her therapy at the park, and the reason why she does the therapy at the park is because she calls it her park. And the reason why she does her therapy there is because there's no activities going on. There's nothing that she can do there. She built this with Jim Tapp, which, rest in peace, he's not here with us, but his wife As I'm there, like, the pictures that you are all seeing is nothing new to me. She does her therapy there. It didn't happen overnight. You know, when your city workers are driving their John Deere tractor, she even knows, on the padded surfaces, that's what's going to make the padded surface break up. All the sand and the dirt that should be vacuumed up, it's not being vacuumed up. It's, it's not a safe place. These are young adults. At one point, they were children, and there were all these little get-togethers that we could do for them. And before the city took over, we had dances. We had all kinds of activities. There is absolutely nothing. So without the Field of Dreams, there is no activities for them. If you could please tell me where these young adults can go hang out and play? It's not the playground. They're too old. They're too big. At one time, they did enjoy it. At one time, they did play on there. What they need now are the sports. Why do they need the sports? For their health reasons. You think they really want to do therapy anymore? Of course, they still have to. But at the same time, when they're playing soccer, it's a type of therapy. They're kicking. When they have to play baseball, it's connecting and eye control. I don't understand how it has gotten so bad. We have been there before that land cleared. This is something that I promised Jim Tapp before he died, that I would make his legacy still live. I don't like to be negative, and I don't know what other word to say besides fail, but you have failed the special needs community. And they are here. And if you can tell me why it has gotten that bad, they would like to understand, and so would I. And I really don't know what else to say. So please, I want to know, how did you let it get that bad? It's a safety hazard. Her wheel. Jim Tapp's dream was to build a baseball. It was supposed to be built out in Palm Bay, because she was playing baseball in a muddy baseball field. Instead, it came here to West Melbourne. It was a safety. It was the first place she was supposed, like, she could go independently anywhere. She's never been able to go and play. Now, she's not independently playing. And not only is she not independently playing, she has no team. There is no team. She's not making friends. She's not making friends. Tony isn't either, and it's not fair to them. And as far as the bathrooms, that's a whole nother situation. We built four handicap bathrooms, two on each side of the building. Do you know they have showers in them? Do you know that they are supposed to have changing tables in them? Because the Field of Dreams was not just a playground. It was not just a park. It is a destination for West Melbourne. I live in Palm Bay. I am more proud of West Melbourne, okay? West Melbourne has been always, I never knew who my dang mayor was, I always reached out to Mayor Haup. Mayor Haup, what's going on? I don't know what to do. He was a mayor I looked up to. I looked up to Mayor Haup. West Melbourne was always my city. My husband ran Lucky's Market. West Melbourne was our home, even though we lived in Palm Bay. Those bathrooms were built like that because we wanted games, Jim wanted games, Friday nights, free hot dogs for the kids, which are now no longer kids, they are adults. We wanted people from Orlando, from South Brevard, Port St. Lucie, to come to us. If those people, young adults, children soiled themselves, they had a bathroom. You do not know how it is to raise a person with special needs, and I challenge any one of you to please live a day in my shoes, live a day in her mom's shoes, and live in Tony's shoes. I take you up, every one of you, for a challenge right now. You tell me how it is to live with someone with special needs, and how you have let this park go is a simple disgrace, not only to the city of West Melbourne, but to our county and our state, because it's a 5.5 million sports complex that is not built anywhere in the United States. The only thing that comes close to this is Morgan's Wonderland, and it is tip-top shape in Texas. And that's all. I'm sorry. I'm emotional, because guess what? It's my daughter. She wasn't supposed to live till she was one. She's 24. She was blind, she was deaf, but she's here. She's supposed to be in a wheelchair. She's walking. Without that field, what does she have? What does Tony have? What does Lindsay have? Lindsay's had five heart open surgeries. She can't be running on a dirt field. She needs that padded field.
Denise, thank you. And I, I just wanted to comment on Brittany. I know I love seeing her out there playing soccer with the soccer pals, doing her thing, kicking the ball. She was playing baseball with Governor Scott on her first day. She, she outdid him, I, I know that. And it just, I, I know she and the rest of us enjoy that park, but thank you for coming up here and addressing it.
Thanks.
Next speaker is Robin Hathaway, attorney.
I'm Robin Hathaway with Lacey Lyons-Rozanka. I've been retained by the Space Coast Field of Dreams Incorporated, the 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We are the countywide volunteer-driven organization that sort of was the lifeblood to start this passion project. The park came together, obviously, through the efforts of the community and was supported with grants from the Brevard Legislative Delegation, was christened by then-Governor Scott, and the support and sweat equity of, of many people in this room and the citizens of this community. Our decisions continue to be guided by the goal of providing access to special needs and all ability citizens. We are here tonight, I originally was going to say in support of this item, based on Mr. Zonka's comments, we are here in support of efforts to maintain the park, and I will let, leave the rest to your discretion, and also not to keep score, but to renew our partnership with you in finding solutions to improve the park going forward so that it serves the citizens it's intended to. We, we want to work together with the city to find solutions in the future and return this park to the jewel it once was. And Mr. Mayor, I will reserve the rest of my time and make myself available for questions where there are...
Thank you. Do we have any other speaker cards?
Some questions for us.
Oh, I'm, Ms. Hathaway, I, I think we're in regular talk, and they have a question for you. Deputy Mayor Frampton, you're up first?
John.
Uh, no, you're first, it says, right?
My comments are first.
Okay. I'm just looking at the lights. Okay.
I'm good. Well, thank you, Ms. Hathaway, for being here. So I have some, some questions here, and I'm going to refer to, you know, the contract that we have with the Field of Dreams. I was present when that was negotiated. I was present when the board members brought us in and talked to us what the intent was, what they were wanting to do. They spoke with us individually. I had a really clear idea of what they were going to do and what we were supposed to do. And I made, I'm going to reserve my comments about what we were supposed to do, because I already mentioned that at the last meeting, and we're going to fix that and do what we need to do on our end. But I'm going to talk a little bit about the, the board, what the board was supposed to do, what they told us anyways. But I do have a quick question for you. Are the individual board members paying for your, your services?
No, sir, the organization is.
So, I want to make sure I got this right. So charitable contributions that are supposed to be sent to the city are paying for your attorney fees, and those charitable contributions are supposed to go serve the special needs community, are paying for your attorney fees. Am I correct in that?
They're a reserve fund. There are reserve funds per contract for operating expenses. Yes, sir. Legal fees are considered operating expenses.
Okay. So I'm going to tell you, I believe there's three pillars for good governance, whether we're sitting up here or we're sitting on a board. First one is accountability, second one is transparency, and the other is following the law. You're right, we do have a business partnership, and I believe that the Field of Dreams should be accountable to the city, just as we're going to be accountable to you. We've opened up our books, we've sent over our stuff to you. We've asked for certain records to take a look at the finances. We haven't received any of that. Also believe they should be, they're not being transparent because, well, you're not being transparent to the special needs community or us, and you're not following the law at this particular time. Right now, you're still set up to take donations, but the state has suspended your donations or suspended your ability to take donations. You also have not made reports to the state, and those would be the financial reports. So you've not made the financial reports to the state. That's a requirement. They're not just, have just said you can't take donations. They've taken the Space Coast Field of Dreams off the website, the charitable website through the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. You guys aren't listed anymore. Right now, you can't take donations, and right now, the website's still up saying that you can take donations. And the website itself says to support, in so many words, the park, but we haven't seen any of the support since September of 2020. I've asked for financial records. No one seems to know where these financial records are. I just want to know if you guys have taken donations, if money's actually come in or not. We can't seem to actually to get that. And if you could answer that for me, that would be great. Why has it taken so long for us to even find out what the tax returns are? The state requires those before you can take a donation. So if you get those to the state, you guys can get back in good standing and actually take donations. Because if I want to make a donation right now, technically, you guys are in violation. I can't even make a donation. So that's on the website that's still active, running right now, that you guys are trying to solicit donations right now. So if we're going to get this fixed, we need to do it right. So all we need to do is get the financial records, be transparent, be accountable, and send the records to the state. The state requires it. So I guess my question is, why aren't that, why isn't that being done? Why wasn't that done?
I think there were several questions in there. I'm going to try to break that up. First, I'm working to correct the error with the Division of Agriculture. As we have no staff, part of the way this deal went down in 2019 is we lost all our staff. So with an all-volunteer board of rotating treasurers and chairs and secretaries, it appears some things have fallen through the cracks. Since I've been retained recently, I'm working to correct those, and I'm in contact with the Division of Agriculture to correct that error. I also am in the process of collecting the tax returns and financials that you have requested, sir. The request was received approximately two weeks ago, and with the holiday weekend in between, I have just gotten in touch with the CPA, and I'm still working to get those for you. I have not forgotten nor declined to do so, so those are forthcoming. Was there another question?
Yes. Could you tell me, who handles the financials? Who actually writes the checks? Who reconciles the accounts?
There is a contracted bookkeeper who reconciles the accounts, is my understanding, and she gave her reports to the CPA.
Does she also pay the bills? Does she write the checks for the bills?
Yes, for that, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Well, to the extent that you represented that we've received financials, that is not correct. We have not received any financials or accounting of the monies we turned over in 2019, so we look forward to exchanging documents with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Thank you, Mayor. Wow. I don't know if that's what I was expecting based on the motion that's been made to us tonight, but I would say, or not the motion, but the agenda item. I don't support the $73,000 to do the repair. I believe the city has an obligation that we accepted responsibility of that facility several years ago, and I had no idea, and I know other council members didn't as well, the condition of that field until I went out there during the FCA event and looked at it. It was just horrific, and it was embarrassing, and we always tout this as a showcase for the city of West Melbourne. And it was an embarrassment to me to see it in that type of condition. So what I would recommend, because I still think regardless of the issue that Mr. Dittmore is talking about, and that needs to get resolved, and I'm sure that'll get taken care of, but that has nothing to do with what I'm trying to do, which is to get the field made whole and right again. And so my recommendation is not to spend this money on a stopgap, not even for a year. I think it's just pouring good money after bad money. I don't think you can repair that surface to make it not be a hazard to people. It's so old and decrepit. So I would recommend, I think it's on the order of $700,000. It's somewhere between $575,000 and I'm seeing $657,000, the two bids that we have to replace those surfaces and to start new. And then hopefully, we can provide the annual maintenance that may be required of it, that maybe will help us to extend the life of it. But regardless, I don't want to do a stopgap effort that is going to, I think, still be a safety risk. I've seen where they've done some of the other repairs there previously. You can see it. Looks terrible. I'm just being honest. It looks terrible. So let's do the right thing and say, from this perspective, we're willing to step up and spend the money that we probably should have already spent and had that surface replaced. As Milo indicated, it was never intended to go this long. And shame on us in a sense for letting it go that long, but I think now we're pretty engaged on it. At least I am, and I think other members of the council probably is as well. So let's spend the money that it takes, whether we pull out of reserves or what, and just add it as a budget item for this year. You know, I'm fine with that. We shouldn't have let it, in my mind, gotten to where it is, and I want to do what it takes to make it right. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Bradford, can you address the stopgap and the safety? If they repair it, is it a hazard?
They had suggested that it could last several years before we would need to do a replacement. One thing I wanted to point out, and a couple of different quotes. So as one speaker had mentioned this evening, the seams really are, you know, kind of the worst part of it is where those colors come together, and then, you know, it would dry out and split, or, you know, moisture gets in there and it splits. And so those seams really are part of the problem, that exaggerated the problem. So one of the vendors had strongly recommended doing away with seams and painting lines on. Another vendor said they don't do the painting. They would still recommend putting the seams in. And so there's a difference in whether you include all the different colors with the seams versus, you know, a solid surface. The one vendor had suggested, for instance, on the baseball field, you have sort of the blue-gray areas under the dugouts. Eliminate those, go green all the way in. You know, the baseball field would still need some seams just for the difference in the color from the brown to the green. But for instance, the soccer field, that could be a full solid green rather than having the inlaid white lines. You could still paint the white lines on top of the soccer field. So then you'd have a solid surface there with the painted lines. And so depending on what our, depending on the approach we want to take, some of these proposals may incorporate that and some may not. And so if we receive different direction, we may need to acquire some additional quotes to meet that specific scope of services. So it's, there's kind of a difference in approaches that the vendors had recommended.
But that scope of services would go, bring the cost down, wouldn't bring it up, correct?
Say that again.
The new or proposed items you're talking about and the method used to replace would bring the cost down or cost up?
Depends on what you're comparing with, and so depending on what the direction is versus what you were.
Okay, so the answer is I don't know.
It depends, right? And so one approach is if the direction is going to be, you know, either a top coat or a full, tear everything out and replace it, you have the options of replacing similar to what's there now where you have a number of seams versus a full solid color. Now, if you go with a solid color versus seams and multiple colors, generally, that cost is going to be lower because it's a solid color versus multiple.
Right. I'm following all that. And where I was going with that is that I think we're all inclined to look at, do we do this quick fix, stopgap, whatever we're referring to it, the minor repairs to carry us over? But long-term, we're going to have to do it anyway.
Right.
So the question is, do we spend it now, spend it later? And if we do, we need to quantify what that is. And then I know we cannot dismiss that there are some historical issues here that we do need to hammer out, and I'm sure my fellow council members will not let that go, which I appreciate very much. But for the sake of doing the right thing for the community and for, I think we need to come to terms with, let's figure out today where we're going with this and not table this because we don't need to see another proposal in a month from now where we're still talking about it.
Yeah, Tom, I would leave to the experts yourself and others that are looking into us what the right approach technically is. My simple wish is, let's do it right now. Let's do the right thing today and replace that surface, make it new, and incorporate all the improvements that, you know, whether you do the line painting or what, that you choose to, but let's not try to repair that mess that we've got out there. I just think we're just kidding ourselves if we think we're going to make that great.
Yeah, I think if your direction is looking at the full, tear everything out and put brand new in, we may want to actually do a formal bid process, define a clear scope of services, because in the quoting process, as I mentioned, some recommended different things than others. And so if you're trying to get an apples-to-apples comparison, I think we need to clearly define that scope of services as to what we're looking for. That way, we get clean, clear proposals back, and then you can select from those.
That's my recommendation. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there another product? If you ripped it all out and started all over, as Mr. Rozanka eloquently said, they poured the concrete and the ball fields have concrete, but the playground has rock underneath. Is there another surface that could go on top that would still yield some sort of safety for the people that use it?
On the rock or on the concrete?
Both. Both. There's, because under the big top, we have two-by-two squares that they use. That's a different product. So I don't know if there's another product out there that will last longer under the sun, yeah.
It's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I would need to research that and get back with you.
All right.
We were primarily focused on replacing or repairing similar surfaces to what's there.
Ms. Young?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just looking for clarity here. On the bid for the $73,000, they're looking at a half-inch-thick wear layer only. There's no warranty or anything on it because this company didn't do the original. This is the one for $17,002, Rep Services. And when I look at the higher bid for $717,000, they are also just doing a half-inch re-top, and they're topping over the existing, what's already there. And we've just been talking about ripping out the whole thing and pouring new.
Yes, that company was, that company suggested a possible re-top. They all have the ability to remove everything and replace. Obviously, that comes at a higher cost than going over top. And so we do have one proposal from Bliss Services that did provide a full replacement. Remove everything, throw all that away, come in with new. So that's one, you know, estimate. But again, if that's the direction at that cost, we probably want to do something that you get an apples-to-apples comparison with all of them.
And a warranty?
Right.
Okay, all right. Just wanted clarification. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Frampton?
Thank you, Mayor. So only one of the companies gave us a full replacement, and that did not include the playground, correct?
That's correct.
So the $575,000, do we have any idea what the playground would cost, or we just don't know the type of material that would be used?
So that's a, like a rubberized mulch, which is slightly different than the...
It's probably substantially cheaper on the playground than it is to the glued rubberized mulch.
It could be. It could be, right. I don't have a good estimate on what a full replacement would be, because the one that did quote the re-top that included the playground, that was all wrapped into a single proposal, and so I don't have the individual breakdown.
So my thoughts are, if we were to do the $73,000 patch and repair, that's kind of like 21% of the cost of doing the whole core, and it's probably only 5% or less of the actual rubberized surface period, according to your little drawings here of all the patch spots.
Right.
So it's a very low...
But then at that point, we would certainly need to do something more.
So the patch that you put on it today, is that going to eliminate any trip hazards that we have?
It is.
So if we continue with that patchwork and then direct you to get a replacement cost, is that a good direction to go on?
Certainly an available option, absolutely.
I think that would be much better than just to do, like Pat said, just a little bit of a patchwork and then have to repair it all down the road. So I think I'd like to make a motion that we obviously finish the patchwork that our staff can do to avoid any trip hazards right now so we can keep the park open currently and move forward with a, putting it out to the companies to get full replacement bids and move forward with the project to get this park up to the level that it should be at.
Sure. Yeah, we, you know, we didn't have a time to do a formal bid process between, you know, the last meeting and this meeting, so we just need a little more time to pull all that together.
So that's my motion.
So we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Frampton. Do we have a second? Ms. Young?
Second.
Second from Ms. Young. Mr. Dittmore?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to support the motion at this time. I just want to make a comment that, for the flows that are here actually too as well. When we took this over, we were, in my recollection, Mr. Bentley or Ms. Young or maybe Mayor, you might remember, I don't recall any discussions about the tremendous cost that this was going to be for the city to maintain or to actually do this. I don't remember this ever coming up one time. I know that when the board approached us, it was, they wanted us to hire their person. They wanted us to take it over, and they would give us some money to help maintain it, but these costs are astronomical and they were never explained to us. And just so that everyone knows, we had no idea that it was going to cost the city of West Melbourne this much money to take care of this. And even the $378,000, give or take a few dollars that we received from the board, apparently is barely going to cover half of the actual cost what it takes to actually take care of this. So this is why, this is why that I've been so passionate about trying to find out where this money's at, is that I feel we have a need to recover some of this to help offset these tax dollars that we're going to have to spend, tax dollars that we need for other projects. And this is an important project, and it is an important thing for the city of West Melbourne. The Field of Dreams is an important item, and I do support that. And I was very emotional, very upset about this the last meeting, the fact that it hadn't been taken care of and had been let go. We had no idea. We had no idea some things were being said, you know, behind the scenes. No one had told us. There was conversations apparently between members of the board that are here on a dais here and city staff members that we weren't, that I read in the paper. I had no idea that a staff member was telling, you know, some of the board members, "Don't worry about paying us right now." I mean, that's not a thing that the staff member can tell. So we didn't have an opportunity to address these things over the last three, four years since we took this over, but I want to know, I just want to reassure everyone that we do have a commitment here at the city to make sure that this park's going to be, it's still going to be outstanding, it's going to shine for the city of West Melbourne, it's going to shine for the special needs people. We need that, and we're going to maintain that. We're going to maintain, you know, this park, whatever we need to do. We're also going to be accountable to our constituents. We have fiduciary duty to our citizens as well as the special needs community as well. So I do support this, but I also think we should be very aggressive. We need to be very aggressive about recovering the funds that we need to get and what was promised us at the time when we took this over. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that, as you know, the board up here, the seven of us elected, our job is policy, and we're the policymakers of the city. And it's been the policy of this board, not only with the Field of Dreams, but all the assets of the city of West Melbourne to maintain at a high level. And I'm sure that staff has heard loud and clear that this is a very high priority to get it up to the standard that we expect and have the safety that the citizens and the residents are using this. So it will happen. We're on the right track getting this done. We're on the right track getting this done, and we're going to get it done quickly, get the field open. Mr. City Manager, when do you think the field will be safe to play on? And any other thoughts?
So we have some pictures. I don't know, Cynthia, if you can look in the presentation folder. We have some pictures of our, what our Public Works and Parks crew is able to do today. There they are, hard at work, cutting out some of those bad seams and replacing them. If you just want to scroll through, I think there's four pics. So we were able to get some patches in there so that the trip hazards are gone and field's usable. I believe it needs a, it's like a three-day cure or so. And then we ran short some product that we've reordered to get the messed of. So not a perfect color match, as you can see, but the Florida Sun will probably fix that. But most importantly, we wanted to get it up and functional again and eliminate all those safety hazards. And so we'll get those products going, and within the next couple of days, allowing some dry time, it should be up and running.
Actually, it looks pretty good. I know it's not a match, but, you know, the, yeah.
I think it's, I'm sure it's paintable. I don't know if that'll help dry it out or not.
You gotta, you gotta be careful with paint because it can be slippery out there.
It makes it slick.
Okay. Mr. McDowell?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a clarification. The motion, which I'm not sure why we have a motion, is to do self-repairs or to spend the $73,000. What is the motion?
Motion was to continue to make it safe with the repairs we're doing now, not the $73,000.
That's what I just said.
But to move into the direction of getting out for bid to replace the entire...
So the motion that we have in front of us to accept one of these bids is not on the table?
Correct.
Okay. So what we're looking at is, we need to have some assurances that this council will be held accountable and not just kicking a can, because that's basically what we did just today, far as I'm concerned. We are not making a commitment to the community other than saying, "Yeah, we're gonna, we'll do it, but we don't know how much it is." Hang on, let me finish, let me finish. Is that it could be a million dollars, and this council could come back and say, "Oh, no, we're not going to spend a million dollars." That's a possibility, correct?
No. He said he didn't have the time to put out a proper bid to get contractors to bid to replace it. They didn't anticipate we were going to replace the whole field. So that's what we're doing. That's the direction I want us to move in, and I think everybody else wants us to move in. And that's not kicking the can down the road. That's good management.
But I mean, we have a commitment to, whether it's $500, $600, $700, that we're going to do this?
We don't have the bids back yet.
No, that's not, that's the...
I'm committed to getting it to 100%.
I think, Mr. McDowell, we're going to see the quotes come back and then be able to make the decision from there. I don't think anyone up here wants to make a decision with no actual numbers.
I do. I do have a question for the city manager.
Mr. Bentley, Nick.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Bentley?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not, I'll tell you what I'm in favor of. I don't care what, and I don't set the amount you guys want and get it quoted, but I'm not of the illusion that it's going to be half a million dollars. I think it's going to be somewhere between $750,000 and a million dollars, and I'm prepared to vote today to make that happen, if that's what it comes in at. So, I mean, you'll have my vote once you get your quotes in. So again, you know, I think, back to some of the comments that were made, I think we really did let the community down as far as, I saw some of the reactions from the city council at the FCA event that we went to, and I think everybody was shocked when they saw that field. I know I saw Mr. Frampis, I saw Mr. Dipmore, you know, I saw the mayor and others that were there, you know, everybody was, I think, six of the seven people were there. And I saw all their expressions when they saw that. So shame on us for allowing it to happen, but I think, you know, at this point, hopefully we'll have management money put in place going forward after the repair to keep it in pristine condition. So I'm not under any illusion that, Mr. McDowell, that it's going to cost 500K or something. It's not. It's going to be expensive, but we had a showpiece, and we need to get it back to there. And not just a showpiece, but it has something that helps our community. And we're recognized throughout the state and probably outside of the state for this facility, and I don't think any one of us would want someone from out of state to come see it today. So we need to get it back to that condition. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I have a comment. It doesn't really apply to the motion, so I don't know if you want to vote on the motion first and...
No, let's, no, we still got, Speaker, let's finish this topic all the way.
Mr. City Manager, what assurances do you have or can you give us that we're not going to go down this path again? I mean, it seems like we were shocked when we went to the FS or FCA event, and maybe we should walk the park a little bit more as city council, but city staff's there every day, and this didn't happen overnight. And what kind of assurances can you give us that we're going to be advised so we don't get to this position again?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, certainly it got, maintenance-wise, got beyond the scope that we would like to see, and so certainly have a commitment from myself as the new city manager and Tom Bradford, and I'm sure our Public Works Director now oversees the Parks Department to make sure that this doesn't happen again.
That's a good commitment. Is there anything we're going to put in writing as policy-wise?
Well, we can, there's nothing stopping us from, I know I'll keep a better eye on it than I did before, because I never looked at it before.
It seems like maybe, maybe there should be a report generated on, what do you get now, Tom, for reports on the parks? I know it falls under your area. So, I mean, do you get a, do they walk it monthly? Do you get a maintenance report every month?
So we're working on having one of our Parks Maintenance team members certified as Playground Safety Inspector. So currently in the process of doing that. That's one of the steps we've been trying to take to get somebody to do more official, more formal document, go to each of the playgrounds, go to each of these and document it. We don't have a formal report that comes in. We get, you know, kind of weekend update reports from staff that work over the weekends, but not a formal...
Shouldn't we get a formal report?
That's what we're trying to work on, is get...
Somebody doesn't need to be certified to see that the park was in deplorable condition.
Right. So what we want to put in place is someone who's doing that inspection process on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Yeah, maintenance is always a big issue with every city around, and not just parks. I mean, I know I, well, it's getting with parks. We have bathrooms that aren't functioning right. Court number four, two years ago, had all the roots growing through it, which is a big hazard. We had to close Court number four down. So there's always those kind of things going on, and we had issues with police maintenance of the cars because they didn't keep track of that. Now we bought a system that keeps track of oil changes and all those maintenance kind of things. So it's evolving, and I think we're better. We have room to grow and correct those deficiencies as an organization, not just as the Parks Department. So speaking of Parks Department, we don't have a Park Director, and that will help guide some of this too. What is the status of that, Mr. City Manager?
So our Parks Department rolled under our Public Works Director, and then we are now the advertising for the Rec Director position is closed, and I believe we have 13 applicants, and we'll be doing interviews.
Ms. Young?
Thank you, Mayor. The park is right at the end of my street, so, and it's certainly within easy walking distance, and I certainly need to do some of that distant walking. So I will be happy, when we have our reports at the end of our meetings, when we give our, when we talk, I'll be happy to update everyone on the condition of the park, unless you want to go there yourself. I go there often. My husband loves the ice cream over there. So I do go over there, and I'm always busy watching the kids skate in where they're supposed to be skating, and then over at the other field, when I go there, when we have the events there, and over by the Splash Park. And we have done some really nice things at the park. We have spent a lot of money resurfacing the Splash Park, putting in the shade things that they have there, the other things that we do to keep the park in tip-top shape. I do have to say, I never walked out on the outfield. I'm there, I see it, but I never actually walked out there. When I did, when I was at the FAA event and I walked out there, I still didn't see it because the part that's in the outfield looks fine. It isn't until you get up to the home base area that you see the shape that it's in. So I certainly, in all of my trips over there, would have brought this to council's attention, just like I did the park bathrooms and that sort of thing. But now that we know that this happens, I will certainly be looking at it, and I'll be happy to come back and report on the condition. That being said, and I'm glad we have Milo here, because I remember when the park was first opened, that under the hood, the covered part, that that middle part of the carpeting was also two-toned. It was green, I think, and two shades of green. It was never black in the middle, and it is black now. It is as black as if it was purchased to be black, and I know for sure it wasn't. And I know some of the exercise groups, I think the yoga ladies and things, when they couldn't use their area here, I think for air conditioning, they had their event down there at the park, and they came back and said they can't use it because they can't be on that surface. And I know if you fall on that surface and you get that black grime into scratches and cuts and things, there could be some issues there. So as long as we're looking at resurfacing this, might we not want to repair that as well, as long as we have them staged to do this, rather than paying for them to come back out and do this a couple months later, because I know we're going to wind up replacing it anyway. So you agree, it was not black?
No. Can they drive the John Deere on it? I've seen that multiple times. That might be virus black.
Oh, it smells like mold. I put my hand down there and smelled it. It smells like mold.
Actually, I think it was red when we first did it, but that there's certain people that red is not a good color for them as far as...
Oh, okay, all right.
So they changed it to a more neutral color.
Whatever color we choose, that's beside the point. The point is we need to fix it, and it's, although it's, I could see some of the corners look like they're picking up as well. So that could be a trip hazard. So as long as we're doing one for safety, maybe we need to take a look at that as well. But I'll be, as my point was, I'll be happy to come back and report to council.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Do you want to say something, Tom?
I was just going to respond on those tiles. We had asked a couple of the vendors when we had them out there about those tiles. A couple of them said that they don't work with those tiles, and so we would just need to find a vendor that supplies those. I don't have any idea what the cost would be for the tiles, but I, we did ask about that for a couple of them, and they didn't supply that. So we would just need to find a vendor that does...
Maybe there's a different alternative than the tiles. I don't know, but you'll probably find that out. Thank you.
Golf course grass would be good in there.
A lot of speakers.
Yeah, I would just comment that I think we're going in the right direction, so I feel pretty good. I think that, I don't know how I want to word that. I think we had talked as a council about making parks a priority this year. It's on our priority list, so I think we're kind of looking in that direction. And I think the city staff is putting together or having put together a master plan for the parks, so we'll get to see the outcome of that. But this is something, you know, obviously we'll bring up to the front of that, but I think the city's beginning to look at this, and I think that's a good thing. I think our parks are fairly well-used in this community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. McDowell?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I will support what's on the floor right now as far as the motion, but do we, is it realistic to expect some kind of timeframe of when we can expect to see something back to this council? That would be my first question, so we can make a decision. And then second is, we cannot lose sight of this contractual issue that needs to be addressed. And so I'm not sure who's the point guard or who's the point person, or we all are, but I think we cannot lose sight of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, then Mr. Dipmore.
You're referring to the contract with Space Coast Field of Dreams Board? Okay. Yeah, we definitely, I'd like to see that ship brought back into the channel and straighten that out, and I think we can do that fairly easily. When I talked about the inspections, I don't want to cross over lines. I know, like the mayor said, we're policymakers. We're not dealing with operations. I'd like the inspections to be done by the city manager or his staff, as it's an operations kind of thing. And then maybe the city manager can report back to us, you know, as things come up. And I also don't want to get bogged down into tacking on other projects to the Field of Dreams. Like Mr. Bentley said, we're having a master plan made up for the parks. We can handle all the other stuff in the parks, but we need to focus just on these Field of Dreams field in the bids that we're going to put out, and that's how I wanted that motion to go.
In the master plan, you pointed out, one of the suggestions from city council when we were speaking about that and looking for feedback was to incorporate the community park, including Field of Dreams, in the master planning process, which it initially hadn't been. So that is part of that process as well.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Dipmore, your last...
Thank you, Mayor. Just going to go back to, I think I brought this up before in the past, but a suggestion for staff and maybe as we set the policy, but a preventative maintenance schedule on these, on the parks where it's actually a checkoff list, where you could then, you could put the points in there, cracking, condition, wear, one to 10. A monthly report, a checkoff sheet that maybe they could put online so that everybody could see, we're being transparent, that's kind of a key thing here, to the public that, you know, we're maintenance, and then remark sections, what maintenance was being done at that particular month or any maintenance at all. And then that way, we're not relying on council members or this, whatever. That becomes part of the policy that the Parks and Rec Department do a monthly evaluation, and I don't think that's too often. I think that's probably a check, for everything that affects that particular park, whether it's cracking, cleanliness, you know, bathrooms, everything gets a checkoff list, any comments need to be made, repairs that need to be made, set up and so forth, and so that we can, and then follow up on that. And that way, the public can see what we're doing, and we easily can see we can do it. It'll be right on the website, and it's easy enough. They do this in the military with a preventative maintenance schedule. It's pretty easy, and it's easy enough for staff to implement, and it's, would be something easy, I think you guys could put together, not just for this park, but maybe for all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick note, because the conversation had come up with, as far as providing an update and where that information can go. Mr. Rhodey, you had mentioned that we have now moved the Parks Department underneath Public Works, correct? Okay, so I know that, you know, Director Picorillo puts in the Friday memo regular pictures and updates that I know most of us have seen in the Friday memo that comes out every week. So while I think a checklist is great, and I think anywhere that we want to put that so that way we keep regular eyes on it is going to be a great move forward, I also want to commend him that in his department so far, he's been great about getting information out in the Friday memo about what his team has been doing, and I would expect them to include park maintenance and updates in that as well.
Yeah, he does a fantastic job with his Friday memo, and you're right, he has been including more about the Parks and Rec side since the Parks Maintenance moved under Public Works.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good. Before we're getting ready to vote, but again, I want to thank the Field of Dreams Board for coming out, and Mayor Alfred, who has spent many days out there building the Field of Dreams, and Field of Dreams President, all of y'all out here, and I thank y'all for being out here and supporting this cause. And this is for the community, yeah, this is kind of a little negative, but we identified the problem, and we're moving forward, and we're going to fix it, and that's a good thing. We have the funds to do that. All right. We have a motion and second on the floor, all those in favor, signature saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries 7-0. That was easy. Thank you. Thank y'all. Thank you, Brittany. Our last item is an agreement with the Vard County for legal advertising.
Yes, I will be taking that one. Back in 2022, state legislature passed a law that allowed legal notices to be published on publicly accessible websites. The website has to be at the county level. The county has developed their official website and has invited municipalities to join in. The charge for legal notices will be $125. It's a flat fee. Not all legal notices will be able to be published on that website, and we're still making a determination on which ones can. We do know that based on the cost, there will be some significant savings. We're just not sure how much. there will be some significant savings. We're just not sure how much. So I am asking council to authorize the city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding with Brevard County for posting of legal notices on their publicly accessible website.
Thank you. Ms. Adams?
Thank you. I'm a big fan of when you say savings, you know my ears perk up. I think that's going to be a good move for the city. So I'd like to authorize the city manager, I make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the MOU with Brevard County for the posting of legal notices on the publicly accessible website.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Frampton?
I'll second.
Any discussion? So is this in lieu of putting it in the Florida Today newspaper?
That is correct.
So...
So how do we know that our residents and people will actually be able to find this website? And will everything we do be on that website?
We are required, under the law, that we have to create a link from our website to theirs. So anybody that goes to our website will know that it's there. We're also required to do a legal notice once a year, indicating on where we're publishing those legal ads as part of the law. We also, in our legal notice, have to announce that we will create a mailing list for emails and/or addresses that if somebody wants to opt in, that we would mail those legal notices out to them.
And when will this take effect?
We have to do a legal notice first and get it in the newspaper.
Would you say that again for the record of government?
We have to do a newspaper ad indicating that this is what we're doing. We also have to do some website to get that link in there and things like that.
Is there anything, any time that you would do both if you really want people to see it?
We could do both. Obviously, there would be a cost. The initial reason why we want to do this is because we believe there will be a cost savings. Average ad costs are between $500 and $800 in the Florida Today. So at $125 a legal ad, a flat rate, there should be some savings.
And $125 was, who made that number up?
The county did, and we, the Brevard clerks met with the...
County attorney.
County, yeah. And they came up with the amount.
Really? It cost $125 to stick one little thing on our website, huh?
On their website. They also have a cost. They have a third party that's handling the website. They have to have a staff member that are providing the affidavits back to the municipality. So there is some cost involved on their part to do this.
Do we know how many other cities is opting into this?
We do not.
Ms. Young?
Oh, I just wanted to ask you, on page 13C, it says that the government will designate a liaison to monitor user access management. I'm assuming that'll be IT, or our city clerk will have another job on her plate.
I assume that I will be handling that. That's just my coordination with Brevard County, sending them the legal notices and things like that. There should be somebody that can do that. And I'm assuming that city clerks will do that work.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second on the floor to now go advertise on the county website. Hopefully, we can find it, residents can find it. All those in favor, so you can go saying aye, aye, oppose. Motion carries, 7-0. That brings us to our last item, our city council reports. Up first is Councilmember Pat Bentley.
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Young?
No report at this time, other than council is invited to the Ellis Road update being held at the airport June 12th, from 10 until noon, at the executive conference room, which is upstairs, if you've been there. So please come in and get the update, for you'll have everybody there that you can, well, you won't be able to be in the audience, but you'll be able to hear what's going on. Is that correct?
Correct. There, I have a stakeholder meeting for the municipalities and government agencies involved, just to get an update from FDOT. Obviously, a lot of movement, parts and pieces, and millions of dollars of the project have already been spent in acquisitions. And so it was time to do a, kind of a overview of what's being, you know, what progress is, where they're at, and then what milestones they're reaching for. There's quite, quite a team between the county and the state and, you know, the consultants involved. There's quite a, quite a lot of action, and so it was time for an update.
Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniel McDowell?
Thank you, Mayor. Besides the regular standing meetings of chambers and whatnot, I did attend the Poverty Summit that was being held at the, I'm sorry, the Prosperity Project, that, a little Freudian slip there, that was held at the Palm Bay Chamber last week, with a group of business leaders that were addressing, if you recall, I'm part of the ambassador group that looks at the third grade reading level, trying to see if there's a direct correlation between poverty and reading scores, and try to get engaged with those schools through the business community. Well, in the process of this summit last week, we were able to identify the five key zip code areas that were mostly driven with lower reading scores and then within, not meeting that third grade reading level, and then relating the poverty levels, which were all relatively high poverty levels. I just wanted to be able to, I have information that I can share with each of you about that analysis, if you want to see it. But I took the liberty of kind of looking at our zip code predominantly, and I know the mayor is very sensitive to the zip code related to schools. But I will say that all of our schools were performing really well above the third grade reading level, with the exception of one of the schools. And in fairness, that school brings in a lot of non-speaking, non-English speaking students, and it happens to be a charter school. And so that kind of brings our scores down to look, not as well. But I will say, there's still a 5% poverty level for children in this city that we should not ignore, and kudos to the group for handing out food last couple weeks ago. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Same as Mr. McDowell, in terms of just the regular meetings. The one that especially came to mind is the Space Coast Self Advocacy Group. It's held over at Promise. It's primarily a group of Promise residents, but they are trying to encourage people in our community that do have special needs to get involved with their group. And so what they've been trying to do over the past month or so, they signed up for a conference. They're trying to connect with other self-advocacy groups for people with special needs in Florida and learn kind of what their techniques are to advocate for themselves in our community. I know that I've met with them multiple times in terms of ways that they can approach different businesses and restaurants to try to talk about accessibility and the things that they need to advocate for themselves. But I know if, I'm making the invitation, if anyone on council knows of places in our city or just in our broader community, that they can go and work on those skills, or that, you know, if businesses are looking for just a different perspective in terms of accessibility and things like that, they're looking for those opportunities, and they're not 100% sure where to find them. I've been doing my best as one person, but more people is always appreciated. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Stephen Frampton?
Thank you, Mayor. We all pretty much attended the marriage breakfast. I think that was entertaining. It was also, it was also good to hear what all the other towns were doing and, you know, things that we can strive to do better in our town as well. So it's always good to hear that. I attended the HBCA meeting on the 24th, and the State of the State address sponsored by the Melbourne Board and Cocoa, so that was on the 1st. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dittmore?
Yes. Quick update from the airport. I think, first one this year, anyways. Went to a ribbon-cutting event today at the, for the Hyatt. The Hyatt has opened up. So it is now, so when people fly in, they have a place to stay right at the airport. So, and you can see the runway, the runway, apparently right from the dining area. So, be quite enjoyable. So that's all I have to report. Thanks.
All right. Very good. Number of things these last couple weeks, I attended the mayor's breakfast. Was one of the speakers. Sheriff Ivey, he always does a great job of making a lot of fun. It's the only, it's a short for, it's like a four-hour breakfast. So, yeah, as the deputy mayor said, it's good to hear what all the other cities are doing and not doing. And it was, it was quite entertaining at certain people's expense. I also attended Mayor McCormick's retirement. She's a long-serving mayor of Brevard County and did a lot on the state level. She is a mayor of Palm Shore. She's moving to Jacksonville, so went to that. I attended, along with Mr. Bentley, the civilian military, where civilians get together with the military and hear their updates and all the good things they're doing for the, for our area. Also attended a legislative update, where all the legislators in this area said what they did and what they hoped, what they accomplished, and their favorite bills they passed. And they did say, and it resonated with me, the only time you're safe is when they're not in session, because they can't pass any bills then. And as you know, they put close to 2,000 bills on the table, and they only passed a couple hundred. And so that's just the way it is. And I attended, and was a speaker at the groundbreaking for the Mitzvah at Temple Israel with the sheriff and a few other people there. And just want to remind you that this month, or this Monday coming up, is the League of City, where we get together with the other 15 municipalities in the county, and we host that. In fact, we're doing that at Promise and Brevard, and we're the host city with Melbourne Village. So looking forward to that. Any question for the city manager or city attorney?
I do.
Oh, go ahead.
You're good. Go.
I just want to make a comment. The Friday Report, the Friday Report was always good, but now it is just amazing. I just want to thank you and all of the staff members, chief especially. Thank you for putting out such a nice Friday Report. It's interesting. It's nice to look at. It's engaging. And I just wanted to say thank you for doing a great job.
Appreciate that. I'll pass that along to the staff.
I couldn't have planned that transition any better, because my question was specifically about the Friday memo and the newsletter that we have that goes out to our residents. I've heard some of the concerns about the transition going to the online legal advertising. So I anticipate, but I'm asking anyway, that we are going to put that link regularly into the Friday memo, into the newsletter, so that we do reach our residents. I know those are two of our avenues. We have multiple of them, but, but I just want to make it clear that we're going to try to use all of our avenues to reach our residents with that legal advertising.
Our clerk is smiling. She's excited to have a featured article now.
But I agree with Councilwoman Young. It is a wonderful resource. So thank you for your time and just continuing to improve it.
Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, we'll adjourn this meeting at 7:42.